All right, we'll call this Planning Commission meeting to order for November 27th, 2017. A roll call?
We've noted attendance.
The first item is approval of minutes of the Special Joint Planning Commission and Advisory Board of Health Work Session from October 23rd. And the regular Planning Commission meeting of October 23rd, we can make a motion together or each one individually.
I make a motion for both.
All right, any discussion of that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, or any modifications to the agenda.
I move approval.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so now we have an opportunity for citizens to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda. So we'll have an opportunity to discuss the public hearings later on, but if there are any items you want to discuss that are not on the agenda, this is your time to do that. All right, our first item is election of Planning Commission Chairperson, staff.
Thank you. As you know, former Planning Commission Chair Erin Vries Daniels was recently appointed to serve on the HRA. Following her appointment, Erin was required to resign from the Planning Commission as members of the HRA cannot concurrently serve on both bodies. In accordance with the Planning Commission bylaws, you must now elect a new officer to the vacant position of Chair. The elected chairperson will serve until the organizational meeting in February of 2018, when we'll elect all new all new governing positions on the Planning Commission. The chairperson is responsible for conducting all Planning Commission meetings and public hearings. The Chair is also responsible for representing the Commission and dealing with the City Council and staff. And it's up to you.
All right, are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate you, if you're interested.
Yes, I would be interested. Okay, so it'd be a motion, it was second, and I think we just treat this as a normal motion, so is there any discussion of that motion? Okay, all in favor? Sorry, I will try to speak louder. This is just organizational for the governing of the board. I'm all opposed? Okay, so, motion carries. Since that would mean I'm no longer Vice Chair, should we act on that now?
Yes, please.
So, I would nominate Brian if he would be willing to serve as Vice Chair. Okay. All right, any discussion of that motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So, now our next item of business is consideration of a resolution finding that the following are consistent with the Richfield Comprehensive Plan. Number one, the modifications for the redevelopment plan for the Richfield Redevelopment Project area and the tax increment plan for the Cedar Avenue Tax Increment Financing District. Number two, the tax increment financing plan for 2017-1 Chamberlain Tax Increment Financing District. And number three, the sale of the property to Chamberlain Apartments LLC for construction of a 283-unit multifamily unit housing project. Staff.
Thank you. So in September of this year, the Council approved plans for the Chamberlain, which, as Chair Hayford O'Leary just stated, is a multifamily housing development on the city's east side. It also includes a two-block extension of Richfield Parkway. The approved contract for private development calls for the establishment of a new housing tax increment district, a TIF district, that will help fund the project, and the sale of land currently owned by the HRA to the developer. Minnesota statutes require that the Planning Commission consider whether any, the creation of any TIF district is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Statute also requires the same consideration when a public body proposes to sell land. In 2016, the city adopted an updated Cedar Corridor Master Plan, which includes the following goals: to establish a renewed brand at a signature gateway to the city, to increase the diversity of housing options, and to encourage the rehabilitation and replacement of the lowest-quality housing stock. The approved project is consistent with these three goals. The entirety of the area is guided mixed-use in our comprehensive plan. This designation allows for high-density residential use as a component of the mixed-use corridor, and the proposed project is consistent with that guiding district. The area is currently part of the Cedar Avenue TIF District, which encompasses land north of 66th Street and was established in 2007. Given that 10 years of potential increment have been lost and that the project includes affordable housing, it is recommended that the properties be removed from that TIF District and a new housing TIF District be created. So just to summarize here, because this can sound a little confusing. But essentially, the Planning Commission and the City Council have now approved this Chamberlain Development, which is the 283 units, and the rehabilitation of the three existing 11-unit buildings on Cedar Avenue. That project also includes that extension of Richfield Parkway. The project's been approved, and the contract for private development has been approved, has been approved. As part of that contract, we said we would create a TIF District to help this project, to help fund this project. State statute requires that you consider whether or not these actions are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So you are not specifically considering what the TIF plan says, or considering what that project, the specifics of the project that was approved. Right now, you're just considering if the establishment of the district, which was contemplated in the contract, is consistent with the comp plan. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Any questions for staff? And could you just describe, Melissa, the item number three? Would that be the same standard as you're describing for the TIF District, that simply the sale from the HRA to the developer is consistent with the comp plan?
Right. So, the majority of this property is currently owned by the HRA. The contract for private development called for us to sell that land to them as part of the project. Again, you need to find that the sale of that land for the development of multifamily housing is consistent with our comp plan.
Any questions, or is there a motion on this item?
I'd make a motion that this, I do think that changing this to a TIF District is in line with our plan.
Okay. Would that be just for item number one, or do you support the whole staff recommendation that also finds the sale of the property is consistent?
I support the whole thing.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion of this item?
Yes.
Any comments on any of those individual items? But I think, in a sense, it almost feels like we've been here since we've considered the project, we've determined the project is consistent with the comp plan, and we sort of knew that this was a part of it all along, so I certainly support this. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. So our next item is a public hearing to consider a request for a variance to reduce the setback requirements for a garage at 6400 Pillsbury Avenue. Staff?
Thank you. In the summer of 2017, the city became aware of a garage being constructed at 6400 Pillsbury Avenue, a single-family residential property on a corner lot. The newly-built garage does not meet setback requirements specified in the zoning code. The corner-side setback requirement for detached garages is 12 feet. The property owner is requesting a variance to reduce the setback requirement from 12 feet to approximately 3 feet. The previous garage on the property was setback to 6 feet from the lot line. There is a provision in the zoning code that would have allowed a garage with non-conforming setbacks to be replaced and expanded. Under this provision, the property owner could have built a new, larger garage of this size, as long as the existing 6-foot setback was maintained. There is no provision in the zoning code that would allow a reduction of the setback to 3 feet, aside from requesting a variance. Additionally, this new garage was constructed without acquiring the necessary building permits from the inspections Division. A timeline of correspondence between staff and the applicant is included in the historical context of your report. I'm just going to go through quickly to remind you the findings necessary to approve or deny a variance. You must find, in order to approve a variance, that all of these conditions are met. The first is that there are practical difficulties that prevent the property owner from using the property in a reasonable manner. Strict enforcement of the zoning code the zoning code provision that the applicant is requesting a variance from, in our opinion, would not have constituted a practical difficulty. The property owner could have either built the garage 3 feet narrower, a 33-foot wide garage instead of 36, or removed the tree from the property to allow the garage to meet the setback requirements. There have to be unusual or unique circumstances that apply to the property which were not created by the applicant, and do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity. Staff hasn't found unique circumstances that apply to this property that do not generally apply to all corner lots, in all single-family corner lots in the city. The variance cannot alter the character of the neighborhood. The variance must be the minimum necessary to alleviate the practical difficulty. Again, staff didn't find a practical difficulty. And the variance has to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff has recommended denial of the variance, based on the fact that there were options to construct a garage with a 6-foot setback that would have met requirements. We don't find that the findings are met, and we also find that the applicant knew about the setback requirement prior to construction. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this point? I would say if we have any questions that we have in mind, it might be good to get them out now, so that if the applicant wishes to respond to this conversation, that they have an opportunity to do so.
I have a question, Melissa. Excuse me. Number five for the qualifications for a variance, the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, and consistent with the comp plan. So, what is the intent of the ordinance when it comes to setbacks, side lot, rear lot, front lot? Can you clarify that? Like, why do we have it? Why is it 5 feet or 10 feet for certain properties?
Sure. The setbacks that are in place are all for various reasons. Some of them are for maintenance reasons. 3-foot setbacks are generally to make sure that you have enough access room yourself to get through paths. For instance, if a rear setback was 3 feet, that's generally enough for you to get a lawnmower behind your building. 3-foot setbacks tend to be in place, I'm sorry, the 12-foot setback on a corner protects visibility primarily. It also allows for cases where roadways, where sidewalks are put in place. The boulevard plus the sidewalk can come awfully close to property lines, and we don't want to damage people's property with our snowplow equipment. Things like that. They vary depending on what the setback is. Some of it is aesthetics, to be consistent through neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I have a question, Melissa. So the variance would not alter the character of the neighborhood or the locality. I know, and one of the reasons there was issue of removing a large tree from the yard. I know in Richfield, that's a huge issue, removing large trees, and so I do kind of think that removing that large of a tree in Richfield could definitely alter the character of the neighborhood on that corner.
That absolutely could be true. Just keep in mind that the applicant has to meet all of these criteria, not just one.
What, can I follow up with that question?
Yes.
Okay, so for number two, there are unusual or unique circumstances that apply to the property. So, next to the property, there is a business? Like a for-profit business?
There is an apartment building behind the property.
Okay.
Which is not the setback that the variance is being requested for.
Right, but it sort of is just a little bit unique that it's, you know, hedged up against an apartment building, a multi-unit apartment building, and then on the corner. I mean, I would say that it does have some unusual circumstance in that respect. And I guess I'll just be interested in hearing what the, some of the practical difficulties are when we open it up to the public hearing.
Just to follow up on that question, I guess I'm curious, how related does the unique circumstance have to be to the condition? Because, you know, recently we had a similar sort of residential thing with a deck that was going to be built on the back, and because of the shape of the property, the only way they could build a deck was to get a variance, so it was the unique circumstance that related to the deck. So I agree in this case that having the apartment building is unique. Most, most single-family homeless don't have an apartment building. But I don't totally see the relationship of that and the placement of the garage. So how do those have to be connected?
Generally, there needs to be a nexus. You need to be able to make a connection between the variance that is requested and and the circumstances. Those things are open to interpretation, though.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing, so I'm going to ask you to state your name and your address. Each person has five minutes to speak, and then at the end, if there is desire for questions of either the commission or staff, we'll take that at the end, but we're really looking for your statements and to hear from you about this issue. Go ahead, and please speak directly into the microphone over there. Yep, on TV. And again, please state your name and address to start us off with.
I'm Ray, 6400 Pillsbury. So in, with the tree, it's about a 50-year-old tree, which provides shade for the apartment building, and late afternoon shade for me. The garage is basically in the same spot it was, other than the 3 feet, which has nothing to do with any visual effects or the road. Right on the easement of the property is a communication box with a it's got two 900 pair of cables running into it. That covers 60 square feet, which is almost half of my garage on the side. As far as snow plowing, I work for a municipality myself. 7 mile an hour is the fastest we can plow. That's Minneapolis. If you're bucking snow, 13 feet plus another 5 feet, you're you're moving. And you're on a, I'm at the end of a T. I've had nothing but great reviews on, not just my garage, but my property itself. I've done my best to win be an uplift to my part of the neighborhood. I don't see any problem with this. My garage faces Pillsbury. The door itself faces Pillsbury. Yeah. But all I have to say.
Thank you. Yeah, could you please sign in with your name and address? And if anybody else would like to come up and speak on this matter related to the garage?
I'm Dustin Cochar. I live at 6342 Pillsbury Avenue South. Actually, I guess for the record, I actually live right across the street from Ward on the north side, I guess, yeah, of 64th Ave. And at 64th Street, and just to kind of set a precedence, Ward is an extremely great handyman. Not even only a handyman, but a very methodical and detail-oriented person. And knowing that he helped me put up my fence this spring, this fall, knowing that, and having the confidence in the things that he knew, I knew that when he was building that garage and the things that I was going through, I knew that there was obviously a particular reason why he did it. And looking at it now, especially, you know, retrospectively, there's a, there's a completely ample enough room for for the, what the city's requirements are for that easement, for like that agreement. Excuse me, Melissa, just a quick clarification. What is the actual variance that Ward's garage needs to be away from that curb?
I don't know the distance of the boulevard there. The measurements for setbacks are given from property lines. The garage needs to be 6 feet, well, it was 6 feet. Technically, it's supposed to be 12 feet from the property line.
Okay. So, with that, the issue at hand here, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, is the fact that it has to be 12 feet and not, and not what it is right now? If that's what I'm understanding with the issue here?
He would have been allowed to keep the 6-foot setback that he had before. He was not allowed to make it smaller.
Okay.
So he's asking for a variance to allow it to be less.
I just wanted to make sure the clarification, because realistically, we all can really gauge how much room is required for obviously plowing and access, and, you know, the plausibility of him moving the garage the 6 feet that way and taking away from the character of the neighborhood with removing that tree is more damaging to the community and to the apartments and to some of those next-door neighbors than having what is already there or what he has there now. So, from a personal standpoint, I would say that it would have been a hell of a lot more detrimental to the character of the community to take down the tree and to have construction come or removal equipment come and, you know, disrupt and everything in the ground and everything associated with that than what he did with his garage. So, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm in marketing, so obviously I don't know the technical terms when it comes to construction and city planning and whatnot, but from a personal standpoint, and obviously an aesthetic standpoint too, and adding value to the neighborhood too. And I'll kind of end on that note too, I wish there were more people in the neighborhood, especially that particular neighborhood, that would have as much pride in taking and their in building up their home and wanting to bring value to that community in this particular area, such as Ward. So, you know, I almost like look up to him, and he's like, oh, you're putting up a garage, well, I gotta do something now too, so. Just on that personal note, and I'm, I feel good about having him in the neighborhood, and I think moving that, it would just, it would be much more trouble than what it is already now, so. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please sign in before you leave. If anybody else would like to speak on the garage, so go ahead and yep, so let's go ahead and have the next person again, state your name and address at the microphone, and then tell us what you, what you want us to hear about this.
Well, my name is Javier Ayala. I live on 6420 Pillsbury Avenue. I am only two houses away from my neighbor Ward, and I completely agree with what he's saying, what he's saying, in the sense that his garage is adding value to the whole block. Because I think his garage is is a good asset for everybody. So, I think that I don't see any problem with his garage at all. And I also agree with the other person that his whole property is in very good shape. He always taking care of the house and everything. So, I don't see any problem with the garage. That's all what I need to say.
All right, thank you. Please sign in. I'm good, yep, thank you. And whoever would like to speak next? Go ahead.
Anthony Schwendeman, 6400 Pillsbury Avenue. There's, there's a few things actually that come into mind as helping him build the garage. First of all, you got, he talked about the communication boxes that are on the north side of the garage. She had mentioned briefly about sidewalk, you know, and stuff like that. First of all, the distance from the back of the curb to the commu, front side of the communication box, maybe 6 feet. From the back of the curb to the property line, 13 feet. From the garage, or from the property line to the back of the box, roughly maybe 2 or 3 feet. Where are they going to put a sidewalk? You got communication boxes there that we, as digging the driveway, when they came and put the apron in, when they dug the apron, they almost hit the 600 pair that runs to that box. So the boxes sit about 4 and 1/2 to 5 feet higher on elevation than the driveway does. So if they're gonna come, when installing the apron of the driveway, almost damaging that 600 pair of communication lines that run in there, what are they gonna do about the height of the boxes, the buried lines that have been buried there for how many years? My question is, where's the sidewalk, the future sidewalk gonna go? If they're gonna put it on the backside of the communication boxes, we're talking about putting it across the property line. Either that or having a 2-foot sidewalk. Also, the neighbor's garage, from the property line, on the south, the south side property line, we're talking maybe 2 feet from the property line. Also, the driveway, when they came and installed the apron, the driveway was prepped where the driveway was gonna go. They had no problem with it then. Until the garage goes up, there's a problem about where it's gonna be, everything was planned out when the, the drive, to the driveway. We, we moved the driveway because, instead of doing an 8-foot driveway by 100 and some feet long, running up the side of the house, right next to the back door, it was more it was better situated where it is now, is for the house. Also, as he stated, I also work for a municipal, I'm not gonna say which one, but being a, being a commercial driver and seeing the way some of the Richfield guys plow, I can see why you guys want these variances. We live on a dead end, as they stated, we live on a dead end or a T, T road. There's apartment buildings behind us. Even the plows by, in the, the short half of the block, the short block, even from the time the plows turn from that T to get to the intersection, they're going 2530 already. So, is that why they asked for that variance, in preparation for damages? I mean, do they, is it necessary that they have to plow that fast? We're talking about a brand-new apron that was put in last year that's already damaged because of the plow. From the, from the back of the boxes to the garage, my statement is, is if, if for future sidewalk use, I want to know where they're gonna put it. His garage, our garage, is inside the property lines. You want to get up here and talk? The garage is inside the property lines. One of the biggest reasons why we left the garage where it is is because when we walk out of our back door, no matter which back door we walk out of, the north door, the southwest door, west door, not southwest, we look at an apartment building. You know, that, that was one of the things that they, you know, you guys had asked questions about. And in the tree, I mean, it's a beautiful silver maple. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it. If it was a damage to our property, to the apartment buildings behind us, if any way that this tree was to be been able to take down, we would have taken it down, and we would have been able to do the garage differently. But why fix something that's not broken? The tree's a beautiful tree, it's, it's one of three on the property. So, taking down the tree wasn't an option for us people who support the green, you know, the economy and everything else. My next question is, if we decide to move the garage to where they wanted us to move it, which is the south end of the property?
I just want to say you are at your time, so I'll give you another minute to wrap up.
Are we now then to share driveways with the neighbors? And then have another, another 100-foot driveway? Because nobody else on the, on the block shares a driveway. So those are some questions that should be attended to, too.
My name is Ginny Moran. I'm at 6415 Pillsbury Avenue South. So my property looks kitty-corner, I can see Ward. And I agree with everything that's been said to this point, that you know, Ward and I moved in at about the same time, and I have to say, in the time that he's been here, fixing up, changing, that whole neighborhood has changed. Everybody's out in their yard. Everybody is beefing up the outside, making it look nice. They want the re-siding, they're, you know, he's They want the re-siding, their, you know, he's really kind of spurred and been great for the neighborhood to um, to, to I, I guess increase our property values. I will tell you from where I sit there, losing that tree would have been horrible because it is really a nice visual. No disrespect to the apartment buildings, but the garage is posi- positioned perfectly. When I look, I don't see an apartment building. I live in a neighborhood with neighbors that I know. Our block party extends from sixty-fifth all the way to sixty-second. And everybody comes down there, everyb- I mean, it is a neighborhood and it's nice to be able to feel, even though there's all of this, I don't know if it's really technically high density housing, although I suppose it is. But it is nice that while we're surrounded by the hub here and this row of apartment buildings here, that we can still look out our front yard, our front window, I guess, out our front window and see a neighborhood and see not a bunch of apartment buildings, a bunch of businesses out there. It really does enhance the neighborhood and it preserves the character more. I think the variance should be granted. I think to be spending time talking about three feet is a ridiculous waste of our, our resources. This is, I'm sure this garage has increased the property taxes that man is gonna pay. It's increased my property taxes, I'm sure. To, I mean, really to be able to, I mean, why would we turn that down? Why would we say this beautiful structure that achieves his purposes helps every one of us on this side as well as the people? I'm sure you guys see it too. That we're not looking out into this faceless business thing. It looks like a home there. It doesn't look like a home and a row of houses that's surrounded by apartment buildings and people that are in and out and they're here one year, gone the next. It looks like a neighborhood and yeah, I, I'm not worried about, I mean sidewalks, you're right, that, that couldn't happen. So for that to even be a factor, it doesn't, it just doesn't factor in for me. But I just feel like this should be, this variance should be granted. All that other stuff, it doesn't matter. It really does preserve the character of this neighborhood and it brings this neighborhood together. Having Ward on that corner has really helped pull all these people together. When I moved in, same time as Ward, I heard, gosh, we were just, never really knew my neighbors. People just kind of did their own thing, but nobody did that. Everybody is out in their yard. Everybody is out helping out. Ward is the first one to be offering to help people put, you know, whatever, whatever projects they need to do. Lending is know-how. Let me, you know, help you plow, do whatever. I think to drive out a citizen that only wants to increase the value of his home, the value of Richfield, a Richfield neighborhood is a travesty. I just think that that would be a terrible, terrible mistake over something that you all have the ability to make right. Nobody is complaining about this. As far as I know, anybody with any standing that has impacted this, by this, those people aren't complaining. This is a bad move to deny this variant.
Thank you. Whoever else would like. Um, could we try to get through everybody's comments the first time and then we'll, we'll try to get back to you? Or we will get back to you. What'd you say? Okay. Okay. Um, anybody else would like to speak on the garage? Um, is there a second?
Second.
Um, I would say we did not allow the twenty minutes for questions. So my inclination would be to return to that in case the folks here would like to, to participate in that. But um, we can, we can vote on whether to close the public hearing at this time. Um, all in favor of closing the public hearing now?
Can I ask a question? Are you asking if we want to have time to ask questions right now?
Um, I, I believe that we should, we should proceed with allowing uh, the applicant and the neighbors to ask questions as we usually do. We give twenty minutes for questions at the end. So, but we do have a motion in a second, so I think we should act on that. So we do have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. So that would be in favor of doing that and, and not doing that twenty, twenty minutes of questioning. All in favor of that? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion does not carry. The public hearing is not closed yet and we will finish the twenty minutes of questions. I think we may have just forgotten about that procedurally. So if anybody would like to come up and ask questions or if the applicant, you, I know you had some additional comments you wanted to make, you could go ahead and do that now.
When she was explaining um, that, that you guys have to meet all these requirements, right? The visual came in between, you know, was, was one of those that you guys have to, you know, they have to consider. The visual of the garage for being able to see surroundings, ho- how do they figure, uh, what is an obstruction of view um, roadwise when the garage is in the middle of a, in, in the middle between two properties? Does anybody have a answer to that?
Um, Steph, could you speak to that or did you?
Yeah, I guess it's uh, typically it's a cone of vision from the driver's seat, um, both from driveways and from driving down the street. So at intersections, they want a certain, you know, so in the plans, you'll lay out this cone of vision of, I can't remember what the exact angle is on that. But um, typically it's, you know, a lot of these setbacks are for that cone of vision and planting any like big shrubs in the right away.
And we're, we're talking.
But also out of the driveway, um, there's, there's the same thing when you're backing out. I, I get your point here. Um, and so I, I'm, I'm inclined to, you know, somewhat agree with you on this um, as, you know, what are we really affecting when we're backing out of this driveway or what are we obstructing? Um, and so, but I guess to, to clarify your point, there, there is an actual like standard on this cone of vision, this field of vision that you have when you're driving and what, how it works with intersections of driveways though. So.
Okay. That answers my question because it, the garage is in the middle of two properties. So I, I, as I was sitting over there thinking about the question, you know, the, the, the things, the requirements that you guys all have to, you know, he has to meet every single one of them, you know, and it's not just, okay, well, he meets this one, this one, this one, this one. So he gets all, let's say five out of the six and then it's declined. Um, i- it's, it's a, it, it's a, it's, it's a tough thing because the, the, if we feel like every time we do an upkeep to the property, um, you know, and as everybody here said, um, that the property has changed tremendously from when even two years ago when I moved in. Um, the, the upkeeps, you know, the, the things that we've done to, to help not only our prop, just our property, but everybody else's. We inspired all these other people to do things. Um, so the, the, the variances, it'd be greatly appreciated if we could, you know, get that. And if, if there's no obstruction of view, um, that's clearly, I guess I don't know how to say it, but uh, you know, if there's no actual obstruction of view, it'd be nice to know. If there is, it'd also be nice to know.
Any, any additional questions? Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm curious to know what you're all um, feeling is on the variance. Like what's the holdup for you? What are you guys seeing from a Richfield Planning Committee that is making um, this three feet, this upgrade to this property, the issue here?
Um, Steph, was there any issue in responding to what we're thinking about right now?
I think that you uh, should close the public hearing and then you can discuss amongst yourselves.
So I think we would do that after, to discuss sort of our position and thoughts on it after we close the public hearing. Unless another member feels strongly that they wanna state something now. Okay, so I.
So you're declining to answer.
We will discuss that after the public hearing is closed.
Like you'll discuss it with everybody at the tier?
Everybody will be here, but it won't be a back and forth. It'll be after the public hearing is closed. No, you can be here, absolutely. You're right. So any, any other questions about the way the variances work, details about this or anything else like that? Alright, seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Um, alright, any discussion of closing the public hearing? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we could have time for additional questions now or if somebody is prepared to make a motion?
I guess uh, in general, I just kinda wanted to state my feelings on this because it is a, it's, it's kind of a, it's a hard decision. It's a hard position that we've been put in um, to make a decision on this because this was something that could have just been remedied by having the garage thirty instead of thirty-three feet. It could have been remedied by actually pulling the building permit for the garage. It could have been remedied by considering alternatives for that tree. Um, and at the same time, while all of, like, like in my mind, when you're looking at the qualifications for the variance, none of those fit. I, I get the staff recommendation why they would move to, you know, why, why we would move to not recommend a variance on this. Um, at the same time, logic and common sense tells me in this particular situation that, you know, what are we affecting this? But it's just, it's, it's setting an awful precedent that we're just gonna let people build it and then beg for forgiveness later. I, I don't like that. That happens to me all the time in my day job. I, I just, I disagree with that philosophy altogether. But it's three feet. It's tearing down a garage and moving it over three feet. And I, I, I guess I, I have a hard time on both ends of this, um, on actually making a good decision for, you know, for the, for the bulk of us and putting this to counsel potentially if this were to be denied and you would appeal it to counsel probably. So. So that was my thoughts on that.
Um, anybody else would like to?
I have some thoughts on it. Um, I sort of am looking at the, the qualifications in a, a little bit different manner, maybe not quite as technical. And one of the things that I have learned on the planning commission is that we spend a lot of time making variances for large corporations and um, I guess I feel like this three feet, um, I mean, it's three feet, however, like for sure you should have gotten a permit. And so, but I do feel like um, I would be in favor of allowing this. I think it'd be a waste of time for people to um, pull the garage down. I also think that we spend a lot of time talking about barriers, building barriers between multi-residential high-density housing and what are the good solutions? And not that I think, I don't think that there should be walls between houses and apartments, but it is something that this city does spend a lot of time thinking about. And so it sort of seems like this is the neighborhood's answer to that issue versus um, the three, you know, this variance. So that is my opinion.
Any other opinions?
Yeah, uh, I do have some issues with, and I mean, I'm sympathetic to what both of you have said in regards to the, the neighborhood. But you knew this wasn't right. I mean, th- this has been going on since April of twenty fifteen. I can't get away from that. That you had some idea, you had some conversation, you had, you had letters written, that you knew that this was not going to, to work on your property. This started back in, in twenty fifteen. I'm talking, I'm talking. Please, you had your time. But you knew that this was happening in twenty fifteen and I would, I am in favor of denying this va- variance because of the history of this. And I, I am sympathetic to the neighborhood. But there are rules here and that's what makes Minnesota, Richfield, um, a better place to live than say, if you go to some areas like Memphis or some of these other towns. I have been in those places without these kinds of zoning and, and these rules that set up for our neighborhoods. That's why our neighborhoods look so good. But you knew this and that's why I'm really struggling with and I am sympathetic to what you've all said because you live there. I don't live there. But we also have rules and we also have to abide by them. And you have been warned, you have been, you have been counseled, you have. And so I have a hard time and I'm not going to support a variance for you and I'm maybe here by myself. But I do believe that you, that you knew what you were doing. And sometimes it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is to ask for permission. And I think that's where we're at in this. And so um, I am just really concerned about this and as also I'm concerned about the precedent.
I do just wanna emphasize the, the public hearing is closed at this point. So we, we really can't allow you to speak.
I'm s-
Sir, sir, yeah, sir, I need you to take a seat. I'm sorry. We, we need to be consistent about the public hearing.
I'm sorry, sir. The public hearing is over.
I'm sorry, Com- Commissioner, co- it's, sir.
I, the public hearing is over. I have heard you.
You need to, you need to stop speaking. Co- thank you. Um, any other opinions of, of the commission that would like to be shared right now? Alright, yeah, I, I agree a lot with what Commissioner Penn had to say. I, you know, there's these critiques of planning and I, I, you know, I went to planning school and I'm certainly familiar with these and I understand that there's this, this concept of ideas that sometimes things are orderly but dumb. And I can see why this feels like that because this, this, it is a built garage. It's there today. It is only three feet. But I also, you know, I went and looked around the neighborhood and nobody else has a garage that's three feet close. I'm, I'm glad that you have. I'm glad that you have the support of your neighbors. I'm really impressed that you are such a fixture in the neighborhood and, but I, I don't think I can support a variance. And I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Holberg. Um, we have seen applications from developers for variances and we use the same strict criteria to them and sometimes we have denied them. We did recommend denial of the Dunkin' Donuts variances recently for these same reasons, going through these criteria. Uh, we do have one just question for Steph. Uh, since the applicant could have built it at six feet before, but that garage no longer exists, if he did want to relocate or rebuild the garage, would he still be able to do it at six feet or would he now have to go to twelve feet?
No, I think we would allow it to go back to the previous setback at six feet.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. So um, I just got done living in, you know, I live on James Avenue and so the city tore up my street and we had all the new sewers replaced. And I do know, like, I can feel the frustration of having things done to my yard where no one has asked me to do that. Um, and also knowing that, you know, it's also, the concrete on my driveway is also crumbling from the plows at this point already. So um, I guess I would like, you know, maybe the ability to talk through these, um, talk through these again at this point because um, definitely while you can say that we have uh, denied Dunkin' Donuts, I do feel like that city council and other planners went and did a lot of work after that to sort of check and see, like, are the things that we denied Dunkin' Donuts for actually matter? You know, like, do they matter? And so um, like you're saying, so they're dumb, but they're the rule. So. I mean, I guess so that's, that's where I am on this. I don't, I feel like um, denying this permit would be um, one hundred percent not listening to the neighborhood. I also think that, and this is a chance that we have, an easy chance to do it, um, I think, you know, setting the precedent, I don't think there's gonna be a ton of people building garages without permits. I think Richfield has tons of permitting, you know, staff driving around all the time, um, looking for people building and um, and I don't know, I wish there was some way if, you know, working out with the city, like a fine that could, you know, maybe moving forward, like what are some other solutions rather than like wasting time and money?
Any other comments? Commissioner Getzberger?
I guess I asked that a question. Uh, I, I, I don't really have anything to say that anybody hasn't already articulated or is probably thinking about. I'm just curious practically what comes, what comes next if we do in fact vote to deny the variance? I mean, what are the next steps?
Right. Uh, if you would vote to deny, the applicant does have the opportunity to appeal the decision to the city council. Um, otherwise your decision is a final decision and the garage would have to be modified or moved um, in whatever way to comply with the code.
And although it isn't strictly part of the land use question, is it possible to scoot a built garage over or must it be demolished?
I am not a building official, so I'm not gonna try to answer that question.
Alright, any other comments or questions or would somebody like to make a motion? All right, any other comments or questions, or would somebody like to make a motion on this item?
I would just like to partially answer your question, that moving a garage over after you're already built is, excuse me, it's possible, it's not easy or cheap, and so I, I guess, at that rate, that's why I'm inclined to, you know, I guess, approve the variance, even though it goes against every fiber of what this rule is all about and how I feel about it. But I would, I'm, I'm going to actually move to approve the variance at this point if there's gonna be
Okay.
no more discussion on this.
Is there a second on that item?
Second.
All right, any discussion of this item? And I would be voting no, although I, I don't think variances technically create precedent. I don't know what we say to the next person who builds their garage three feet and says that they did know, but they, they chose not to do it, or the next five people who do that, I, you know. There, there is a burden placed on corner lot owners that they do have to have this larger setback. If, if I didn't care about the rules and I wanted to use the maximum amount of my backyard, I don't see why I wouldn't do that, so I, I will be voting no on this. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? All right, so that motion does not carry, so we would need another motion, or would we need to make a motion to deny?
Yes.
Thank you. So is there anybody who would like to make another motion on this item? Motion to deny the variance, probably.
I will move to deny the variance.
Give a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the denial of the variance? All those in favor of denying the variance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion carries and the variance is denied, and that can be appealed to council. So we will move on to our next item on the agenda. And that would be to conduct a public hearing and consider revisions to the city's zoning ordinance related to construction standards to mitigate the impact of airport noise. Staff?
Thank you. In two thousand nine, the city adopted a new section of the zoning code entitled Noise Attenuation. One of the main purposes of this code provision was to require building materials of superior sound transmission, sound transmission classification, STC, rating to better insulate against noise penetration in the area most affected by aircraft overflight noise.
If there is any discussion, could you please take that outside? Thank you.
I'll just pause a moment.
Okay. All right.
Okay. To continue, in two thousand nine, the city adopted noise attenuation standards to deal with the operations of the Minneapolis-St. Paul Airport. These classic, these requirements put in place STC ratings to better insulate properties against that noise from the airport. In two thousand thirteen, that section of the code was amended to make it clear that the upgraded building requirements were to be considered only a recommendation for remodeling projects and a requirement for new construction. Since the original adoption of the ordinance, only a few homes have been built in the area. But then the past six months, however, three new single-family homes and two hundred and eighty-three units of multifamily housing have been proposed. In applying the code requirements as currently written, both staff and the construction contractors involved in these proposals have found that the language in the code is too vague in some cases, and practically and/or financially infeasible in others. Currently, the language states that construction in the affected areas shall utilize building materials with a sound transmission classification rating of at least forty. While it was the intent of the code that this requirement was only meant for the exterior envelope of the building and not interior walls or floors, this is not clearly stated. It's also not clear whether the STC of forty is required of each and every exterior building component, for instance, dryer vents, storm doors, and primary doors. In practical terms, not every component receives an STC rating, and it's easy, or is it easy to test for sound transmission? And there are some components that are either not offered on the market with an STC rating of forty or greater, or the cost of them is so excessive as to render construction of any housing in the area infeasible. For these reasons, staff is recommending amending the language in the code to specify that the STC requirements apply to only exterior building materials, and that the rating goal of forty or higher would be applied as an average to the exterior surfaces rather than to each individual component. Additional specificity for minimum STC ratings for windows and doors is also proposed, as those are the chief cause of concern for noise penetration. The specific STC ratings for windows and doors that are recommended are the result of a great deal of research at a staff level as to the market availability of windows and doors designed for noise insulation. And just a little bit of history here. In, in, in nineteen ninety-nine, the city of Richfield had a lot of concerns about the new operations at the airport. We were asking the airport to, we, we took MAC to court over the, the noise from the increased airport operations. Ultimately, there was an agreement, a consent decree, that served as a framework for resolving those, the dispute between, it was Minneapolis, Richfield, and Eagan, and the MAC. Part of the consent decree, as part of that, MAC agreed to expand the noise abatement program, which made upgrades to homes in order to better insulate against noise. And a condition on Richfield was that the city had to consider an ordinance requiring new residential construction to include building materials and methods designed to better insulate against noise. The city did pass an ordinance, it did not pass the model ordinance proposed by MAC. Our ordinance was much more, more protective, more stringent. Since that time, the application of the ordinance in practice has shown that the language is too vague, and in some cases, like I said, requires materials that just aren't available or are cost prohibitive. I know there were some questions on this item prior to the meeting, so I'm happy to try to answer those now. Otherwise, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Yeah. I, I have a question. So this, let me see, I'm just trying to read the text here. The condition that was put upon Richfield back in two thousand or ninety-nine, where, you know, they had to consider this ordinance requiring new residential construction to require these new building materials with these ratings. Do you, or, you know, does staff in general feel that the, the updated requirements that we're proposing still meet the general, what do I wanna say, the, the threshold for the general improvements that were under the MAC improvements? They, they still fit under that, you say, even with this whole average system that we're considering?
Sure, I understand your question.
Okay.
And first of all, I want, I, I do wanna say that these requirements are still more strict, yes, than what MAC would have required specifically in multifamily. They're as protective or more than, and single-family, but they are more protective for multifamily. The MAC proposed the model ordinance, it didn't include any STC ratings for windows and doors for multifamily. It only addressed adding air conditioning and mechanical ventilation. It didn't talk about windows or doors at all. And so we're, we're still doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hol, or Commissioner Masaki?
Two, two items. One, I think the, in, in the information we have in our packet, the subsection is wrong. Right now, it's currently listed as subsection five oh nine dot nine for accessory buildings, which I can see some carryover from the prior conversation. But I think it's totally different.
Yes, it is, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. The other is, is there a clarification that this is only for the primary dwelling and not for accessory buildings? Because as I read this, the exterior treatments could also apply to garages where, you know, I'm sure people wanna be safe from plane noise, but I don't know that it's necessary to increase garage or accessory structure dwelling costs, or accessory, sorry, accessory structure costs.
That is an excellent question, and I, I don't think it is clear on that, so that's something that we should address before we take this to council. Our intent is not to have this apply to accessory units. I'm, right, I wonder if it's sort of implied by residential dwellings and words like that in, in the rest of the ordinance, but we should double-check that.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing on this item?
I do wanna make one other comment. In the text of the ordinance, right now, it says that glass doors must have an average STC rating of at least twenty-seven. That was a typo, it is twenty-eight. I'm, I'm sure you all looked up doors with those ratings, so just to be clear, it's twenty-eight going forward.
I didn't make it to doors, I tried windows.
All right, any other comments before we open the public hearing?
I have a couple quick questions. So, a resident had sent me some questions, and you, we kind of talked about them a little bit, but one of the questions was why did the proposed change to the agreement come about? And you've kind of talked about that with the cost prohibitiveness and the vagueness. And was this a request from Chamberlain? Okay.
No, this actually came up, so there, since the time of adoption, our housing staff has, we've, we've built one new house in this area, one Richfield rediscovered home, and the, these costs came up when that home was being built. What ended up happening is that we end up giving that home an additional subsidy of seventy-five hundred dollars to make that project work. That was the difference to install. And, and that property ended up, I can't remember if it was the storm windows or acoustical windows. Those are your choices if you want to achieve this STC rating of forty. You can either have windows with storms, which most people don't want anymore, or you can buy specialty acoustical windows. So we subsidized that home. This came up again even before the Chamberlain, in that we have three other lots in that area for sale right now. And there is a builder interested in those. Those lots have been for sale for a couple of years now. We haven't had any bites. That developer, builder, who's looking at those lots, looked at these criteria and said, this is not financially feasible for us to do. So staff went out and did a lot of research, our building official, our housing staff. We contacted five or six of the major manufacturers and pulled all of their different types of products to see what would be reasonable, what's affordable, what's gonna provide the protection that we want in these homes, but not prohibit people from building. We want, we want new housing in this area. We don't want to be so restrictive that, that we're not gonna allow that. Did that answer?
Yeah, that does answer.
And then I just wanna reiterate the question I asked earlier over email, but just let everybody can hear the answer about, since one of the projects that will be impacted by this decision is, is a multifamily housing thing, of course, we don't want noise to travel between multifamily housing units. Is that a problem that we will be reducing these standards, and would that adversely affect the noise insulation in that building?
That should not affect unit-to-unit noise. Unit-to-unit noise is governed by the building code. There, pardon me, there is a minimum STC rating between units, which is forty-five, but typically, what's built according to our building officials is fifty-five to sixty. You know, developers don't want that noise transfer between the units either. So there's a minimum set by building code. Typically, it's higher. This will not impact that.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, you'd have five minutes to do so. And just as the last one, please state your name and address, and then sign in before you leave.
My name is Brian Hall, and I live at sixty-nine forty-five Seventeenth Avenue, South. I think the STC ratings were put in on purpose to make it difficult to build residences in these areas where they're gonna be negatively impacted by the noise and the low-frequency vibration generated by the airport. I think that was the reason that they made them so tough. And now you're gonna change it because you have developers who wanna come in and build housing for people to live in these areas. I thought originally that these were supposed to be in an industrial area during the original redevelopment idea, and I know it's changed, a lot has changed in the last twenty years. I mean, I've lived in that house since nineteen ninety-six, so I've gone through the whole gamut of everything that's gone on with all the plans and the redevelopment plans that have fallen apart, and developers coming and going. So, I mean, I understand that we want to redevelop this property, but are we gonna lower the standards that were set for a specific reason? Which is to protect the people that are gonna be living in these places. I mean, that's my concern, one of the concerns. I'm not opposed to redeveloping the property. What I am opposed to is changing it to fit a cost for a developer to come in at a cheaper price, to build what would be not considered substandard, but less than desirable, if you follow what I'm saying. That's why the ratings were made the way they were back in ninety-nine or whenever the, the original ratings were set up for these homes and developments that we're gonna go in here. I don't know, I'm, I'm just very frustrated with a lot of what's going on with the project, and I, that's not what this is about right here. But I think if you're going to have people live in these areas, I think you should maintain the standards that were set, regardless of what the cost is. If you're gonna have people living and dealing with this airport noise and low-frequency vibration generated by these airplanes as they land and take off, I think you cannot change the standard. That's my personal opinion, I mean. I don't know, I just, I just feel like it's, we're doing whatever we can to get somebody to build something over there, no matter what, is the way I feel about this, how this is going right now. Are you gonna do the same thing on the north side when a developer comes in to do that? I know there was some plans for townhomes and apartments on the north side of sixty-six, right? Something like that? Is that part of the comprehensive plan? Am I, am I not right?
That was a proposal discussed, but we really wanted to hear from you at this point.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm just asking, was that, I mean, are we gonna change that variance too, I mean, for them?
Just a comment, this would, this would affect the rules for any new projects, not just this one.
Okay, so not just, okay, that's all I have, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? No? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the public hearing is now closed. Any comments or additional questions for staff before we hear a motion on this?
I had a question. How does, how do these changes affect the low-frequency vibrations and the effects of those?
These changes do not affect low-frequency noise. These changes are related to actual noise, not to vibration. You know, the MAC at one point had undertaken a study to try to figure out ways to mitigate for low-frequency noise. There, and, and there really was, nobody ever came up with anything. There are no standards. There's nothing that we can adopt necessarily to, to help with that issue.
And then the second question I have is, what size was the house that the seventy, like, how many windows did the seventy-five hundred dollars accommodate in that house? Because I have no idea what that scope of cost would be.
Rediscovered houses, you know, they're, they're sort of our move-up housing, so they're generally four-bedroom homes, a little larger than your typical Richfield Cape Cod or Rambler. But I don't, I don't know the specifics of the house. My guess is, you know, twenty-five to thirty-five hundred square feet house, and I don't know how many windows that would have been.
And if, to put in windows that meets the requirements that we're asking for now that are a little bit less regulated, how, how would that affect the cost?
Right, that's, they're still a little more expensive than something that someone might buy off the shelf at Menards. But they're, they're going to be within a reasonable percentage.
Commissioner Penn? Oh, okay, sorry. Do we have a motion?
Move we approve the change with the examination of exterior structures. Move we approve the change with the examination of exterior structures and the correction of the section.
Okay, you have a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, I do, I do have one question. Now, this, this, this does still go to council for final approval, this, and there will be, they're relying on our conversation and our research into this to make their final decision and they probably won't deliberate too intensively on this?
Correct. I mean, they can deliberate, it won't be another public hearing. But my assumption is that they will discuss it. They do depend on your recommendation, though.
Okay, I, I guess just general comment then, you know, I, I think, um, while I, I agree with your, your sentiment and your comments, I, I also would like to think that, you know, that we're, you know, we're relying on, you know, all the time that the staff has spent on this to ensure that we're not creating something that's going to be a liability down the road. Because at the same time, I feel like it, it seems like the general intent here is to, you know, make developable housing that's going to retain its value and, you know, be marketable down the road. So I, I guess I, um, you know, it would be nice to understand what the, you know, historical context was on this more in-depth, but I guess, you know, we don't have the luxury of doing that and we are relying on staff for that. So, um, you know, I guess I would, you know, you already seconded this.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just have a comment. I was there when, uh, when all these were made. And, you know, the atmosphere at that time was pretty wild because that north-south runway was going in. And we were really all scared because it was going to ma- put, make such an impact possibly on the city. And so some of those restrictions that you're talking about, we, you know, we were looking for ways to protect our residents from, uh, the, this impact of this new runway. Even though they assured us that they were going to go south and go over the river and wasn't going to affect us that much. But, so, so I can, the atmosphere there was a little bit different because we were concerned about this all, what was happening. We'd just lost our golf course, you know, we had this air, this runway, you know, very much closer to our city limits. And so, um, some of these restrictions were pretty, we were, you know, it was just a way to assure that us, maybe in our own mind, but also that something was going to, we were going to protect those residents. Because it was something that we really didn't know what was going to happen and it was, it was so close to us. So there was a different atmosphere and I think that, I think technology probably has changed. I think there's other things going on and that's why I'm going to support this. Even though I am sympathetic to what the speaker said because they, yeah, they were put in for a reason, a lot of those restrictions, but then it was a, it was a different time, a different thing was going on. But, um, I do, after talking to staff, I do understand that we do have to develop our, these properties and we've got some people that are interested in doing that. Yeah, we do need to build those houses. We do need to have, we've got to do it in a way that protects the rest of the residents as well, too. So, and I think these do, these restrictions do.
Commissioner Kitzberger, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I apologize, I know we, the question has been called, but I, I'm just curious, I'm hung up on something that, Melissa, you said earlier about how there hadn't been any bites on these properties prior to very recently. Do you have a sense for why that is? And I guess what I'm wondering is if it's, it's generally understood when a developer, um, is in a position or is interested in these parcels, if they know what kinds of requirements they're going to be on the buildings that they develop? Or if that's something that, you know, after inquiry with the city, that they learn more about and then kind of get cold feet and back out once they realize that they can't make the numbers work? So I'm just curious if, do you have a sense, one, of why there hadn't been interest in the properties up to this point? And two, if there's, there's an understanding out there of what, what the requirements are going to be for these, for these buildings that get developed?
Right. So I don't have a good sense of how many people have inquired and perhaps found out about this and walked away. The, the far east side of town has not been as popular for our lots as some other areas. There are a couple of the lots that are a little bit more difficult, um, just in terms of topography. So I think they've kind of, um, they, they've just, it's sifted out and these are the la- we're running out of lots. Here are some of the last few that are left right now. And it's a hot, these lots are a hot commodity now. I do think that this builder came in and was ready to go with these houses and heard about these requirements and, and got scared and said, "This is, um, this is more than I'm required to do in Minneapolis. This is more than the builder's guide would call for that Metropolitan Council puts out. Here are the numbers, this is what it would cost me to do this and that my numbers don't work if, if that's your requirement." So based on that experience that we had a few years ago with the house that we gave that additional subsidy to, I think we, we seriously thought we really need to relook at these. We do not want to let this area of town languish because our restrictions are so, are, are so restrictive.
And I, like, I, I too, I just want to reiterate the point that I'm sympathetic of the idea of, you know, making exceptions for developers once they've inquired. But, you know, in addition to us having another twenty years of, of understanding of what the impacts practically are, the housing marketplace has changed in that time. And so this isn't necessarily a matter of building substandard housing in that area. It's a matter of, we've learned some things in that time and we have an opportunity to actually apply what we've learned, you know, in, in that context, in that area. So, uh, I, I just want to, you know, thank staff for the time they spent on this. Because, you know, your, your capacity is limited to undertake projects like this. So I, I think it's a good, good example of, uh, you know, being responsive.
Thanks. And can I, can I add one other thing? Like Commissioner Rosenberg mentioned, when these rules were put in place, we were anticipating the noise. We were anticipate, we were looking at, um, noise contours and anticipating this vibration and things like that. The latest noise contours, um, which, which can change depending on flight patterns and airport operations and whatnot, put this area in a lesser noise, it has been for a couple of years now, a lesser noise area. So the impacts over this area are not to the extent that they were shown in those two thousand seven contours. So that's maybe another reason to, to take a look at these, make sure we're protecting, um, our investment in our Richfield rediscovered homes and our subsidized lots. But also, but also being, again, responsive to the situation.
Did you have something to add? Okay. Alright, so we will do the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve these changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. So next, I believe we have liaison reports, uh, Community Services Commission. I don't, was that, was that Aaron X? I don't remember who is who on these. Uh, City Council? HRA?
No report.
Uh, School Board?
Yeah, the superintendent at the last meeting gave kind of an overview of, uh, the capital budgeting process, which is good because, um, you know, after the results of the election, uh, we're going to be doing some bond sales. And so I think it was a good refresher for that. There was an election, incumbents were, were reelected and both ballot questions passed somewhat overwhelmingly. So that was, um, thanks everyone for participating and for paying attention to it.
From the Transportation Commission, uh, the two items we discussed, we were again talking about the D-line bus rapid transit that'll run on Portland Avenue. There is an issue of concern to Richfield that the MAC Council right now is proposing only a single stop at either Seventy-second Street or Seventy-third Street. I think some in the city would like to see it at both Seventieth and Seventy-third, which would keep more even spacing, uh, because that would reduce the existing bus service on Portland Avenue. So if you're interested in that, uh, the official statement plan where they'll be taking public comments will be coming out in the new year and I'll mention when that's, when that's available. And the other big thing, uh, that's coming up is Lyndale Avenue reconstruction. So the street is going to be reconstructed in two thousand nineteen and they're well underway with the planning process. So they spent much of their meeting sort of talking about priorities of different users on that street. It should be a really cool project because we are self-funding, so we don't have all the difficult paperwork and appeasing different levels of agencies. The city gets to build the right street for the city. So, uh, our next open house on that will be tomorrow at Would Like Nature Center. So I hope you can check that out.
What time is that?
I believe it's at four P.M., but I will double check that. Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, the holiday party is, uh, December fourteenth. If anybody's interested, go to the Chamber website and find out details, we're signing up.
Cool. Yeah, it is, it is four to seven P.M. at Would Like Nature Center. Alright, City Planner's Report?
Uh, just one item to report. In terms of staff, we've hired, uh, an assistant planner to help in, uh, in community development. As you probably all know, we're very busy in our department. So, uh, we'll be wel- welcoming Sadie Ganette. If any of you came to the presentation by ship with the Public Health Law Center, you would have seen Sadie present as part of that. So, um, she's going to be joining our team in December.
And our next time meeting location is a work session tomorrow at five forty-five P.M. in the Bartholomew Room. And that's an update on Cedar Housing, right?
Yes, Cedar Point Two, that's the area across from Target and Home Depot.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.